Everything screwed up.
Yeah.
I don't, I run and keep up with this.
I see emails up my phone, but I rarely want to read them that small.
Yeah, they got them now.
You're going to put it on YouTube, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we can start.
Okay. Things sound six thirty, we'll call the meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Beno.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Moleson.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Mar.
Here.
Holda.
Here.
And Smithback and Schnelly are excused.
Things how we have a forum, we will move forward. Item three is approval of the February third, twenty twenty-two planning commission minutes. Anybody have any comments, questions, or all of accepted motions for approval? Move to approve, Moleson?
A second, Glish.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item four is public appearances. Before we get that, I want it to be known that we have a revised agenda. I don't know if everybody got that copy. But item four F, which is the Fleming Development, has been tabled by the applicant. And I want, it was, was to go forward, it's not a public hearing, it's just a conceptual conversation. And I understand that there are people in our audience that would like to speak on that, and this next item on our agenda offers you that opportunity. So with that being said, this is the community input option on our agenda. And this is a time when we have the opportunity for anybody that would like to speak on an item that is on the agenda or not on the agenda. You have the opportunity to do that now. I'm sorry? We would respectfully ask you try to keep comments to three minutes or less, so that you can be more. And that if somebody had to say the same thing that somebody else had said, to make those in my teeth, that you try to keep the repetitive nature of it to have one person speak to those topics. So with that being said, I will open an opportunity. If anybody has something to speak that is on the agenda or not on the agenda.
Bob, you're here for the woods.
Yeah.
Item, so there will be a public hearing for that coming up on the agenda here, so.
Oh, we do.
No, I'll give you the, I'll give you the thumbs up and the wink when it's time.
All right, seeing none, I guess we'll move forward. Item D, site plan review and possible approval from Bergamot Town Homes Two. Captain is fiduciary real estate development. In your package, there's a memorandum describing the project. You've seen this before. It's very similar to what has been done before. Is there somebody here to speak on that project?
Sure.
My name is Paul Schmider. I'm with fiduciary real estate development. And with me tonight is the architect for the project, Leah Teske, with JLA Architects. What you have in the packet is really a continuation of the townhomes that were built a few years back. We tried to keep, you know, the, the look, the materials, everything as close as possible to what's already built out there. I think this was master planned when those went up, and this is really just us building out the last buildings that are on the site plan. If you have any questions about materials or why we did anything, I would certainly be willing to answer any questions.
Elise, you want to give us a little background on this and kind of bring us up to speed on what's going on?
Sure. So we've seen this a couple of different times in a few contexts. We did a comprehensive plan amendment last June, I think, for these to change from that planned business use to multifamily, so that was passed. We did a zoning change in December, maybe a couple of months back, to have that reflect that comp plan designation of multifamily zoning. And then the site plan, you know, is able to meet all of the requirements of multifamily zoning districts, so we don't have a GDPR SIT here. We just have a simple site plan. I will commend fiduciary and JLA for being really responsive to some comments we had from our engineer, from our planning consultant, and incorporating those. So there was a revision to the packet, I think it was published yesterday morning, Joy. So hopefully, everybody got to see that, but they did include a letter. They addressed the comments. I did have one memo, or one typo, I noticed, in my memo for the lighting, which they updated, but refers to sports field lighting. So I think I must have not changed this from the JCPark project. So as far as I know, there's not any, you know, lacrosse fields out here. That'd be a nice amenity for your tenants, but we won't hold you to that, so. Otherwise, again, this is going to be twenty units of housing added, so there's two parcels. I don't know if there's a good sheet that has kind of that site plan.
Yep.
For both of those, but one's on the west, I guess southwest corner of Bergamot and CC, and then the southeast corner there. So two buildings, each on the west side, three on the east. Each building has four units, so. I think it would be a nice addition, entrance to that neighborhood, and happy to answer any other questions, but we're recommending approval. They've met all of our, you know, comments and questions here.
Anybody have questions for the applicant?
So there were no further concerns from the village engineer or anything? That was all covered?
No, yeah, we got, there was some comments about easements for the utilities, and Jeff looked at over this afternoon, too, and they were able to address those, so.
I didn't see a memo in here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't get that back in time, but I did look at all the changes that they made, and it looks like they addressed Brian's comments from Richard Milky.
Well, we could also just take contention to find files for staff approval, too.
I would recommend that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that, and make sure the fire department gets to see this one more time, too.
Anybody else have questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Bergamot Town Homes for fiduciary real estate development.
I'm moved, John.
Moved by Glish, second, by.
I'll second.
Moleson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, and that is with the caveat of staff approval. Does that suit you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four C, public hearing to discuss and consider the recommendations to the village board of a preliminary and final replat of the woods at Bergamot parcel number one six five zero five oh nine one oh four six zero two dash one lot two certified survey map number fourteen twenty-seven. Formerly known as Lot five oh four in Bergamot. Advocate submitted by Danilo Kocky on behalf of Bergamot Real Estate Home Company. At this moment, I will open the public hearing, and I would ask for a staff report, please. Elise, thank Jeff, any comment?
Yeah, so just some background here. Let's go down to that map there on the memo. So the lots that they're referring to here is the woods at Bergamot were originally intended to be sort of a copy of the Legend Hills development that you see there on the, kind of the southeast side of that lot. Those narrow condo-type developments, they're all single-family detached homes, but narrow lots with some pretty strict, you know, landscape requirements to maintain that buffer in the back there. So that was the intent for these parcels. I think there was originally going to be.
Thirty.
Thirty total.
I think thirty.
Yeah. And the, the change that they're requesting is to instead make those lots match the single-family homes that'll be along interlock in there. So zoning change from the condo-type narrow lot to our standard SR three, single-family, large-lot home. So it would be six lots. And the, there was basically two approvals with this, a zoning change, and then a replat, preliminary and final replat. And there was some detail about a path that was adjacent to these lots. Jeff had a meeting this afternoon, so I'll have him provide a little bit of an update on that. That was sort of what I was waiting on to provide a recommendation on tonight, just as outcome of that meeting.
Right. Yeah, so originally, when Legend Hills was platted on Lot five oh four, there was a discussion. At that time, there had been an original path through the light, path easement through Lot five oh four. That the thought would be provide some connectivity through here. During the Legend Hills plating, it was that path easement was ended at moving way over here onto this property, actually off of, off to the side and outside of Lot one and onto a completely different parcel, with the idea that that would, that someday be extended down here, and that would provide that path through here. We met with the architect and fiduciary this afternoon. They provided us with some profiles through there. And not only through here, but if that path continues on over here. And they're two hundred and some feet at about eleven and a half percent, which is just not a good situation anyway to go about it. I think we're, we're going to talk about it a little bit more tomorrow, but I'm more comfortable in actually recommending that we would likely not require that path at this time. It would probably be a maintenance nightmare, and as the developer has said, there are full, full-lit streets and sidewalks on both sides of this entire development. There aren't any other public paths in this development, so I think if, if the topography could take it, I think it would be a fine idea. But given the topography, I think it would, could be a dangerous path and possibly very difficult to maintain.
All right, petitioner comments then. Anybody here to speak on that project?
Sure.
Please give your name and who you're with.
Sure. Again, Paul Schmider with fiduciary real estate development. This is phase five D, essentially the, the last phase of this part of the subdivision. So the, the other phases have turned out to be very well received. The demand is, is high, and to do the six lots versus the twelve, the, the more narrow lots, it just made more sense to us to, to look at this as kind of a continuation of what we've done in the rest of the neighborhood. And we feel it, it fits better, even though it's a downzone for us. So with that, I, I feel that we would more than likely start this as soon as we get through permitting and, and things like that. And with regard to the, the paths, we, we do have our civil engineer with us tonight, if there's any other questions about those grades, but we, we spent a lot of time discussing those earlier today. So if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions for the applicant?
So were these lots platted with the original condominium of the, of the lots up the hill?
No, this is an unplatted lot right now.
So this was expansion area for condominium?
Well, yeah, originally, it was known as five oh four, which was multifamily zoning. And I think we, by right, could have put a hundred and eighty apartment units here. So when we came, and when we came forward with the, the smaller lots, the Legend Hills, and we gave up that zoning and downzoned them because we felt it was more appropriate for the area, and that's really when easement for the path was given up. And when we, when you look at this in two D on a plan set, the paths make a lot of sense. But then we started doing more of our engineering and started to look at it in a sense of profiles. And that's when it, you know, I think it dawned on everybody that this thing's really steep, and you're spilling these paths right out into a road. And, yeah, phase five is essentially a cul-de-sac, a huge cul-de-sac. There's no thorough streets in phase five. So the traffic is relatively light, and it's sidewalks on both sides of the road. So that's some of the things we've talked about today. But, yeah, that's where it is. This is an, an actual plant of these six lots.
And just to clarify, Paul, my understanding was this was never, this has not been added to the HOA for the condo association or the HO, the homeowners association for Legend Hills, right? Had, had this.
Yeah.
Moved forward, it may have been, but at this point, this lot is not part of any, not part of the Legend Hills HOA.
So how do we handle the existing easement that's on the west side of that other property, then? I mean, because right now, it's just a easement to nowhere.
Say that again, John?
You had said that there was a, if I remember right, there was an easement that was pushed to the one side, and I, I, I remember right again, it was because of the grades on, on that lot as well?
Well, it was, it was pushed outside of Lot one because these lots are so narrow that I believe the side yard setbacks were six and four feet. Is that right?
Yep.
It could be varied. And, and that did not provide, that would have put the path literally right up against the house. And so at the time, the developer worked with the owner of that, the owner of the golf course, which, you know, has that property, and secured that twelve-foot easement just outside of Lot one.
If we could go back to the memo, that real image you could show.
Yeah. Yeah, here we go. Yeah, that's a good idea. So, oops. So this is Lot one, and, yeah, that easement goes right along here. There's, there is an easement, there's, there's utility easements that go along here. There is a, a water main that goes right down here and ends at a hydrant right now, which is just a dead end. With the idea that when, as part of phase five D, that's going to be connected down here to interlock and, and tied into there. So that's going to be our looping of the system that we always need. But the, the problem with the path isn't necessarily right along here. This is actually a really nice grade. The problem of the path is, is right here.
Okay.
And, and this is, I think, twenty feet, twenty-two feet, I think, from this point down to this point.
It's actually almost twenty-four feet of drop.
Yeah.
About two hundred feet, so it's, it's rather steep.
Yeah.
Be able to get your water mains through there?
Yeah. Yeah.
So was the, was the option explored if the easement exists on the, going to the, I mean, you call it the south. Exist at ease from the hydrant heading south there? Does the opportunity explore to flatten out some of the grade between those two lots and bring it down onto the area that you had said is actually pretty flat?
Down, down over.
No. So instead of the twenty-four feet of fall.
Yeah.
At two hundred feet, if you're to do that at the one and twelve with landings that are needed, and then you're going to be up at some point, and then that grade then could be dropped as you come to the south on that existing easement behind the hydrant.
It can be dropped, dropped here?
Yes.
And then we put it down in a pit here, right?
No, you're still high there because you can't come down at one and ten, you can only come down at one and twelve.
Right.
So you've got twenty-four feet to fall to two hundred feet, so you can fall, what, eighteen feet-ish?
Yeah.
So you've got, you're up six feet at that point. So you've got six feet that you need to make up between there and the sidewalk, essentially.
Right. Yeah, so that would drop this down another four or five feet.
Would it raise it or?
No, this is, this is, because if you're going to, you're going to have to drop this because you can only, if I'm understanding you correctly, this is the twenty-four feet we have across here.
Yeah, and I have to correct myself. It's actually from above where that hydrant is to the road, it's actually thirty, just over thirty-six feet to drop.
Oh, so there's another drop from the hydrant to the curb, to the sidewalk.
From here to here, yeah.
There's a drop there.
Right, but not much. This, this is actually pretty tame here, here.
So that's my point. If you start in the northern part up on the, on the curb.
Up here?
Yep. From there to the sidewalk next to, all the way down, you've got X distance that you need to drop.
No, great game.
Is it ever explored to go from point A to point B in that entire distance, rather from the top to the midpoint?
This would, you would not be able to cut, you'd be, you'd be cutting all through here, and probably have to be, what, about ten to twelve feet deep here at the corner?
Throw a C on it.
Yeah. I don't think the people in Lot one, I think I hear a Lot one owner over here would not like.
We can't go down to.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Not without, not without grading easements and everything like that. So this is high.
Yeah.
This is low.
Okay, I'm reversed.
Yep, yep, this is high, this is low. Yeah, it looks, I mean, if I pour water right here on the screen, it'll go down to here, but, but it'll, yeah, this is. This is the high point, and then going down to here. So this would mean that this would be a major cut here.
Got it.
It would not, yeah, don't worry, we're not, we would never suggest that.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
I thought it was going the other way, mind me.
Right, yeah. And the bulk of it is, is right through here. Yeah. It, the, the difficulty with, and, and if it, if it could be a meandering path, or whoop. If it could be a meandering path and that kind of thing, or switchbacks, it's a whole different deal, but that's just never been envisioned for this. It would be the responsibility of the HOA to take care of. However, our experience is that's not always, it's easier said than done at times. And I would be a little concerned if we had a path along here and had, say, a twenty-five or a hundred-year event, rainfall event, it would probably just gully out the side, to both sides of that path, and then we'd end up with a real mess down at the road, so. I'm all for making connectivity, but I, I think, and I went into the meeting this afternoon thinking we would, we, we would require it, and I came out feeling differently.
I think with that being an easement path, too, the liability for the property owner would be a burden as well.
Could be, yeah, I mean, yeah.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? If not, then we'll move on to public comment. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak on this? Please give us your name and address.
I'm Kristen Crayor I S T N Nelson, six four seven Bergamot, otherwise known as Lot Two.
Johnson, Robert, her spouse. Different last names, same address. Thank you for having us. We're concerned that the vision we were sold i- is now being altered, which could, A, affect the value of our investment, B, the sense of the vibrant condo community that, that we were sold as a vision. When we bought, we were informed there were going to be fifteen lots along Bergamot, in fifteen lots. That would all be a total of thirty condominium lots. You've heard on a couple of times, and I don't mean to be redundant, the lots are relatively narrow. The landscaping requirements are relatively strict. We have setbacks from the property line that left the beautiful native forest. And, and when the lots are as narrow as ours, we felt like between our buffer zone and the condos adjacent to us to the west, we would have some level of privacy so that when we sit out on the back deck during the nice times of the, the year, we, we could literally enjoy some privacy. And with regards, the, the woods honestly were a strong influencer in the purchasing decision on the part of each of us. If the immediate past is any indication of the future, if any of you have driven past Bergamot two years ago, I think you'll notice there was a heck of a clear cut. We're afraid that that clear cutting may reoccur, and the privacy that we've had with the woods and the enjoyment therein could be negated. We're not against progress. We're not against a modification or what have you. We would just respectfully ask you as a committee that the setbacks that we had to oblige by as a lot owner follow suit to the new zoning. With, with regards, if, we, we don't need clear cut and grading butted up against our backyard. So we're, we're, we're trying to be as amenable as possible while still retaining the vision we were sold.
So I, I think, too, I, I don't profess to understand unplatted lots versus planted lots. What I know is from when we bought our lots, and what we had in our documents was that there would be our fifteen lots, and I think it's actually a total of ten behind us, that I think is still unassigned by our homes today, saying this is, this is the vision, this is what we're doing. And then we get a letter a week ago that says, oh, hey, we're changing the rules. By the way, we had an HOA meeting on December eighth, never discussed them. So somehow this just came back up in the two last two, two and a half weeks, or two, two to two and a half months. And I'm just a little confused as to why now, and why are we just notified it prior to the board meeting? A little discerning and concerning. And as Bob said, you know, we were sold a vision. We bought into it. We bought into the fact that the homes behind us would have similar type of homeowners, probably empty nesters, folks that. Folks that otherwise want to stay in Bergamont but don't need mega mansions, don't want large lots, have an HOA that otherwise does their snow renewal. All of that's taken care of. Now we're hearing, gosh, we're going to change the rule only because these haven't sold as quickly as we would like to. And I hate to say that, but that's how it feels from the, from the homeowner's end. They haven't sold as quickly as possible. So now we're going to change the vision behind us. And oh, by the way, to Bob's point, the clear cutting, this is all that's left of the woods and all of Bergamont. These are the only trees that are left. Everything else is gone. They got rid of them all last summer to put in interlock and then everything else. So you get rid of those, you lose all of the rest, the turkeys, the deer, everything else that's left in Bergamont, they're gone. Which would be really, really concerning. To Bob's point, we just asked that the vision that we were sold not change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want that sheet back, Bob?
We do.
Okay, once it's passed around.
One of our sales packet from three years ago.
Okay.
With the condo lots on both sides and.
Can, can I ask a question on that sheet?
Sure.
You have some blue markings. Are those the lots that are sold versus unsold? What are the blue markings?
That would be original one. Yeah.
Those are the lots that are sold, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Pam Hoffman, six forty-nine Bergamont.
William Ferguson, six forty-nine Bergamont.
Uh, lot one, which was the one that was under topic just recently. Um, I reiterate and, um, agree with everything that, um, Kristen and Bob just said. I would like to add that, um, we did meet with our neighbors and, um, everybody is in agreement with what was just stated. And in fact, I just, um, spoke today with one of the ladies that's home is being built, that's not yet in place. And she also, um, agreed with what we, we talked about. In fact, you have a signature on the petition. So I just want you to know that everybody that's currently living there that we've connected with has, uh, feels the same way that we do. And I think the biggest thing is the disappointment. I, as an empty nester, was looking forward to the more community aspect of it with, you know, thirty, I've looked around, we, we've talked about different condos in various places. I have two daughters in Oregon, I love Oregon, and it was a real opportunity to get something like this, a unique opportunity. And, um, we'll live if it's just for fifteen, no, I mean, if we're still fortunate to be there. But to lose that buffer, to lose that feeling of what we now have, um, that would be extremely sad. And somewhat frustrating, and we all understand business and we all understand the needs of a long for a lot of people. Again, we're very fortunate to have what we have, but at least give us, give us what we expected and at least allow us to retain a sense of who we are and what we thought we were going to be.
I think the bottom line is we want to save those trees. That's why we bought those lots and build our houses. And it's not just us present owners. We have people come up to us asking us about this, this, these lots, one, two, fifteen. And everyone will ask, are the trees still going to be there? That's the atmosphere that they, they wanted to join. And a couple of those people went ahead and bought lots because we said, yeah, yeah, the trees are going to always be here. And that was it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
I, I guess I've got a couple of questions. Um, so what, what you would like to maintain is the, the nature of having thirty homes grouped together rather than fifteen homes or single-family homes behind you. Is that, is that what you're afraid of or, yeah, somebody please? I, I just, I'm trying to understand what, you say that you, you bought into this thought.
So I say, we get it. We'd like the, our, our primary goal would be, yeah, the vision was the vision. We have in our HOA that says, you can't do anything with these trees. You have to leave it as a buffer. It has to stay natural. Get rid of the dead trees only. Ideally, that would be our first goal. Second goal is, if in the, in the goal of progress and be able to sell lots faster, we need to go down to four or five or six lots behind us, that's fine. We're just asking that then, they have the same rules. No outbuildings, no cools, no children's structures in the backyard. You keep the trees and you don't start that grading process and get rid of the trees. Nothing has changed from the time the developer bought the lots to change the grading. Nothing has changed. So we're saying then, why does everyone have to suffer if that hasn't changed from, from the time it was farmland? Fair?
I, very fair. I, I, obviously, everybody's got an opportunity to do due diligence if you're going to buy a piece of property. The grading hasn't changed since that property was procured. The, the, the document that you saw with the twenty-five condo lots, that was when we bought our property some three years ago. So I was extremely surprised to hear that it wasn't officially plotted in a condo when it was in our purchase packet. That aside, if the six lots, we're not against progress, we have absolutely nothing against Joey or the fiduciary team. We just want to see the landscaping requirements consistent with the vision we bought into. I think that's a great compromise. I don't know how much more clear I can be. That's all we're asking for.
I appreciate that, thank you for, for me, thank you.
I was wondering if the fiduciary team could speak a little bit too, because I think some of this language is in the condo, uh, documents, but some of the setbacks that the current condo association homeowners are held to for their landscaping buffer, just to kind of be able to compare.
Right. Uh, Joey Wasniski with Fiduciary Real Estate Development worked really closely with our Legend Hills, uh, community as well as the larger Bergamont HOA as well. The, uh, the Legend Hills has a rear setback, um, intended to keep what specimen trees are available and what's, what's alive. Um, the, what is now the, which would be referred to the now six lots abutting those in the rear lot line. Um, the, the problem there is that you, we're not going to create another HOA for those six lots. So they have to fit into the larger Bergamont landscape requirements. Now, the ACC, the HO, or the, the Architecture Control Board and the HOA have some, you know, uh, some availability to them to ask residents or future homeowners to consider the, the rear lot buffer. Some of those grading, the grading, as you saw from the path experiment or exhibit, that the grading here is really steep. So you can grade to a certain level, but you also need to fit a home on there as well. So we can't, in the current Bergamont, the larger Bergamont area where this area would be absorbed into, there is no, there is no landscape requirement for you to keep trees on your lot. But like I said, it's, it's, it's a, it's a question of, you know, yes, we would, we would love that to happen, we want that to happen, we can encourage that to happen. But ultimately in our, our regulations, the documents for the larger HOA does not require that.
With regards to the grading there, are you saying that basically to make those lots buildable for those single-family homes, they're going to have to do quite a bit of grading and clearing of those lots to?
Towards the front, yes, towards the front and where the build, well, the, where the, where the, you know, reasonable buildable square area is, yes, there will have to be. And same with the Legend Hills lots, we clear cut it much of where the, where the homes sit now. Many of those areas, you can kind of see from the satellite drawing, um, the further kind of northeast you go, that those, that area was clear cutted so that there could be a place for you to put your house. And we left the back, you know, to a thirty feet or, I think it was the twenty-five, thirty feet, so that you could keep as much as you could there. Um, like I says, we can recommend that and, and ask that future homeowners do that, but once you buy the lot, you have to abide by what in the current declaration of restrictions, which would be the larger area, which does not mandate that you keep trees in your lot. But again, it's, you wouldn't build on that rear lot line. Um, I, I, just practically, logistically, there's, I would imagine that you would want to keep the trees there and um, keep as many of them as you could because that's a very steep area. You're not going to be able to build into that.
It seemed to me you could apply an additional, uh, restriction and covenant to those six lots, uh, making those requirements pretty easily.
The HOA is no longer majority, i- i- it's within the hands of the, of fiduciary. But to add an amendment, uh, would take fifty, over maybe even sixty percent of the current lot owners. And fiduciary is not a majority owner at this time, or a majority of every lot. So we would, it would be, um, considerable process to, to do that for six lots.
You wouldn't amend the original covenants, those would stay on. You would attach another covenant to these six lots, which had some additional requirements. I think that's doable.
I, I, I'm not certain, I'm not certain, but I'm saying within, within, within the, certain, within our declaration of restrictions right now, we would have to get sixty percent approval.
Yeah, I get that. There's some additional could be possibly applied to maybe make this work.
So I did look at the plat, the agreements for Legend Hills. It looks like they have a thirty-foot rear yard setback, um, for the home structure, um, for the condos compared to SR three, which is what they requested for the rezoning, that's a twenty-foot, um, rear yard setback for the home. Again, these are pretty deep lots. I think Jeff, if you scroll to the re, the replaid page that has the dimensions, I think some of them are, the dimensions are maybe two hundred eighty feet deep or something, so pretty deep lots here.
This, yeah, this is two hundred and seventy-seven along here, so it's probably two hundred and fifty feet, two hundred and?
Yeah, so just, they do vary in size, but. You know, there's certainly a, a pretty workable envelope there if a single-family home would go in there and be set logistically and from a cost perspective and for erosion control for those homeowners, they probably would want to maintain trees on that hillside rather than just.
Yeah, I would, it would be, yeah, I think it would, it would be an, an engineering task to try to build towards the rear of the lot line, um, uh, within the building footprint setback, but, um, you know, it's just the, the nature of that slope would lend you to have your home close to the road.
So, um, this is probably what's blanked, so, uh, anybody else have any questions for the applicant or for, um?
Am I understanding that there was not a forestry inventory requirement when this was initially started?
Good question. It's one that I had written down. Uh, Elise, do you know in, in past subdivisions, we have requested that they do an inventory of treeless? Um, and I guess my first question would be, I'm sorry?
I was looking for, uh, Keel Ladopolis, who has some experience with that over in Oregon Parks, neighborhood addition, yeah.
I guess my first question is, w- why was there, do we know the history of that, why there wasn't, they performed originally? And is there the opportunity to do that here?
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, so, so this was platted in, the original plat was two thousand and four, I believe. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
Joey, uh, prior to most people, um, and at that time, that was not, uh, the, so the entire, entire subdivision was platted originally by Fleming Development. And, um, at that time, we're not aware of, I've never seen any, in all the stuff I've gone through, I've never seen any tree survey or anything like that. That's kind of been something that's come along in the last ten to fifteen years. Um, and so that was never part of the original plat covenants or anything like that. Um, however, you know, and then, and the only time we've seen it, I think the most recent one was over in Cassandra Way. That's the, the Keel Ladopolis, uh, uh, development over there. Um, and, and that was a lot of, I mean, it was a lot of work to, to go through all that process, but, uh, Lisa and I were just talking, I don't know if you want to mention that as a possibility, is?
Well, I mean, depending on what way the planning commission wants to go, we can certainly, you know, also table this and look at a couple of different options with the applicant too and see if, you know, that might be a little bit more of a compromise. But, you know, we could do kind of a, a different plan development set of, uh, rules here where rather than the standard SR three twenty-foot, uh, rear yard setback, we get requested it be thirty feet, which would be more equivalent to what Legend Hills is held to. Um, it would have all the other SR three, um, you know, abilities for building heights and side yard, front yard setbacks, things like that. Or we could ask the VELCORT to potentially have a thirty-foot, you know, just as an example, thirty-foot wide landscape easement that runs along the back of these parcels and then the parcels would just get smaller. And that would be land that'd be dedicated to the HOA and would just be maintained as a?
Well, I don't think it'd be dedicated to the HOA, because, but I think, I think what it would be is, is it might just have certain restrictions on it as far as building.
It can't be, you know, no grading, no.
Could, I, you know, yeah, that's, I mean, it's not something we've run into. We'd have to at least run that by Matt and everything like that, but, um.
You might want to pull some of the minutes from when we approved these narrow lots. I, I remember the discussion of trees and Mike Slaney was here then.
Right.
I think the requirements to leave that buffer, you know, on these lots, these front lots were, was part of that discussion from the.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this has gone through two revisions. Uh, the original, the original had a lot more trees on it, I think. Was it two years ago where we had to bring it back, where fiduciary came back and we took out, there was a request to do some grading and everything down along.
Right, yeah.
Bergamont, you were having difficulty because people couldn't envision.
In the first phase of Legend Hills, people, the, the trees came, you know, maybe twenty feet to the road. So people couldn't envision cutting some of this out and putting a home there. So we ended up clearing basically what's, what we, building footprints area across and then leaving the rear, as much of the rear as we could, so that potential residents could see, oh, okay, here's where my home is. And when I walk the lot, I can see down into the valley, you know, but there's all these trees there. So you have, uh, you know, what residents describe as some of that privacy. I, I guess as I, I envisioned the same type of privacy. I just don't know how we can, with the way the HOA is, it's being absorbed into, is mandate that. Um, but again, it does not, it would not be a bu- a buildable area or buildable slope, um, in that area for a home.
Well, I think we, we've kind of gone through the plan commission comments. Um, and I think it's, uh, we have enough background to sort of start to have a conversation about how we want to move forward. So with that being said, if there's no more comment from the applicant or from the public, or from the public viewing. And let's have some discussion amongst us. Personally, I think that Scott made a, a really good idea that I think that a lot of this, um, a lot of this can be taken care of with an addendum to the, uh, with the lots. You can create an easement of landscape and you can easily describe some document as to how much of those trees as a percentage are maintained and, and, um, you can keep it as the same zoning, uh, you just can't build in it because it's an easement. Um, and, uh, the neighbors get what they want with the thirty-foot setback on the back, uh, for landscape and they get some, some trees. Um, and then we can also add that and have some time to talk to our lawyer about, um, some of the attachment to the property about the, the landscape requirements. So the developer gets what he wants minus five feet of development on the backside of the property. Uh, but the neighbors also kind of get what they want, it seems.
Who would enforce any kind of, uh, who would be the enforcement for any kind of area back there? That's, I think that's a question.
It's, it is a valid question and I run into it in my subdivision right now. Um, there is, there is, uh, somebody has to be the whistleblower.
Yeah.
And I think that we have fifteen people that are, um, fairly ill-equipped.
They all have whistles.
Yes. Some of them are here tonight, um, and will be watching on that, um, to make sure that some of these things are maintained. Um, and I, I, I think that that's in a better place than some other subdivisions and how that can be handled then, yes.
One idea we've talked about with stormwater easements and other neighborhood. One idea we've talked about with stormwater easements and other neighborhoods is in the future, maybe putting in some small signage, you know, signage you might see on a trail or something like that that says, you know, no grading past this point or something. So perhaps it's something we could suggest that there's actually some kind of, you know, designated, I mean, if people are going to be doing clearing and the builders come in, that that's something that's either maintained or people are really made aware of when they purchase these properties, because it's one thing to work with the developers and they know where, you know, trees should be maintained or where grading shouldn't happen. But we always hear the first thing, a builder comes in, they dig out the basement, they dump, you know, a whole bunch of soil into what was supposed to be a swale. And all of a sudden, our stormwater, you know, overland flow routes don't work because they're full of soil. So maybe we could look at some options about just how, if there's some kind of landscape buffer here, how that is communicated to the folks that tend to be living on these lots.
So like, that's kind of telling that, that we should, we need to table this before we can kind of move forward comfortably. But what I don't know is how do we come up with the verbiage and take that next step? Is that something that's burden of the village or the developer?
I guess, could you say, you know, the planning commission directs staff to work with developer and village attorney on a language that incorporates changes requested by neighbors? And then we'll come back with some solution that hopefully is agreeable for everybody. And we will have to have a, I guess, to see if we'll have to have another public hearing probably for those. But we can certainly let people know and we'll have, if there's updated information, include that in neighbor letters. But I think that will probably give us enough flexibility.
One thing, we're, we're certainly willing to look at, at this. And if it were to be a condition of approval, that would be preferred over being tabled simply because of the timeframe if this does get going. We're concerned about getting paving in this fall. And as a new condition of the village, before this, these can be accepted, we have to have both lifts of asphalt on that road. So it's...
Well, you can still proceed with interlocking, correct? I mean, that's all platted, that's, you're not, you're not proposing any changes to the right, the roadway right away though, right?
No, but I, I would think that people would like to know in our organization what the outcome is before we start the whole thing.
Sure.
Well, I think the comfort level is that we haven't said no.
Okay, that's fair.
I think the comfort level is that we have a path forward. And I think that, I think we equally take comfort in that.
Right, I guess, and Jeff, maybe it's a question for you, if this is tabled tonight, it would be on next month's. So it essentially would push us back a month for permitting?
Permitting, what?
Grading.
The grading?
Utilities, grading, the whole thing, the whole phase, five D.
Well, it shouldn't be because you still have, you still have every way to put your road in and utilities for the subdivision that you already had approved.
Yeah, you still have the utilities, the, the only thing with the utilities that I, I will concede on is, is the utilities are going to be wanting to put in, like underground water utilities are going to want to put in the water services and the, and the sanitary laterals. And this, the difference is whether you're putting in six or twelve or eleven, you know, whatever that number is for the narrow lots. So I would give them that as far as that, but, you know, I think, you know, I mean, you could put in more, but it's, it's, you run the risk of having them in the right locations and everything.
Are the utilities designed for this phase or?
Yeah.
Do you have electric running on the rear property line or is it up front?
It's on the rear, it's all in already.
So it's in this steep slope in the midst of all these trees, you've got power running through there already?
Yes.
Yeah, that's part of Legend Hills.
Yep, right, for a line to be in the backyard.
Yeah, so you have, and you have, do you have gas back there or probably just, probably just the dry utilities, right?
Yeah.
So charter, TDS, Frontier, that, okay.
Lot owners, as they build, would need to extend through the wooded areas, through the sensitive areas to extend their services, uh, westward.
But it won't be clear cutting or anything like that, they could choose their locations.
Okay, so with that being said, it seems like we have a path forward. I would entertain a motion based on Elise's comments, I'm not going to try to repeat that.
Okay.
Okay, everybody understating sort of what Elise said?
What is, just for clarification, you probably should...
Can you reiterate?
Yeah.
Recommended motion was to have staff work with fiduciary and the village attorney on language to incorporate the requests made by neighbors located on the back lot lines.
I think there should be a little more clarity that the neighbors want, you know, trees preserved and a buffer zone added to that. So thirty-foot setback and maybe an agreement on a minimum percentage of trees to be retained.
I think I've also seen language about necessarily just percentage, but trees over a certain diameter be maintained or be D H. So I think there's some language in your documents about trees over six inches in diameter or four?
Four.
Okay.
We have to keep all trees over four inches in diameter.
Yes, please.
So it almost seems like you can go back to that original language and probably use that for their development. Okay, so we have a motion. Guess I'll make that motion. Yes, by Molsen, second, second by Meyer. All those in favor, if you can, I'd like by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, we'll see you, I guess, next month.
Hey, Elise, there was a petition, went around right when we were starting the meeting, I didn't get to read it all, can you send out a copy?
Yeah, that'll be a copy, it'll be included in the minutes.
There's several pages there.
Yeah.
Uh, since item D is just the sort of an extension of this, I would assume that we would, I would assume that this would just go along with it then?
Yeah, I think they're, they're tied together with the lots and the layout and, you know, I guess to make sure that we're not going to have any kind of plan development zoning rules here, I just want to maybe wait on that rezoning for SR three until we know how the boarding is going to look for that landscape buffer.
So then do we need a motion to table this till next meeting then?
Probably.
So I...
I'll move, John, table it.
Motion by Blish, second, anyone?
Second.
By Smithback, all in favor, six to five by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, carries. Thank you, moving on, item D, conceptual discussion with Adam Foyle and accent parkers regarding large, excuse me, regarding revised site plan and elevations for potential multifamily building at eight seventy-eight Indian Orton Lane.
Thanks for having me back. Yeah, thanks again for having me back, I appreciate it. So we, we were able to update, I think every item we talked about last time. I think we came up with really a pretty good site plan here. It ends up company in what we believe would be forty-nine units at this point in time. And we did get rid of the parking lot in the front on Main Street. And I've got that shown as a paper patio right now, that'd be kind of a nice, right area, kind of a nice feature, driving pass. I have this kind of categorized as some architect and some engineer comments from last time. I did add the building heights on the back, I don't know if I had that last time or not. But it's just over thirty-eight on the west end, just over thirty-nine in the back when the ground tapers down to get to the underground park in there. We did make the west entry a little more pronounced entry, you can see, I just got these today, so sorry if these weren't in there yet. The color plan, this is the first draft. Familiar, this may be...
Yeah, it's a little bit like the Rosewood Apartments, which look really nice.
So, well, but this is the first draft that we just got today, I got it this morning and just saw it this afternoon. So the difference there between the, the one that's already in a packet, is there some vertical siding added in the upper left? And something I just personally like, I think it stands out a little bit more. So that was something that I asked to, to add. Above the entry door is the siding area is widened a little bit to try to make it look more of a pronounced entrance. And I think that, that was actually all of the architectural comments, was the, the west entry. And then I think the height goes on mine, just getting the colors was, just happened to be timing, that we just happened to get it today.
What is, what is the dark material?
It'll all be hardy plank or similar, PVC smart side, hardy plank, something, I did see some real nice vinyl siding, but I'm not planning on that. All of it smart side or hardy plank, I do really like that PVC product, I've never used it, have you used it?
The stuff that just came out?
Yeah.
It's got insulation behind it?
I don't, does it all have insulation behind it? I'm not that familiar with it, I'm aware that maintenance free was always being sold to me. And the samples in hand are just a, are just a section of the PVC itself, so that insulation is built into it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't crush like a bio clay.
Okay. I thought it was very interesting, but it hasn't been an option so long.
The dark colors on PVC, you got to be a little careful because PVC expands and contracts a lot and the dark colors absorb more sun and...
Get chalky.
So it could be, well, it can move a lot more, so you have a lot more chance for rippling and oil caning and that sort of thing.
Okay. As drawn is probably, it's most likely to be hardy plank with the people I'm talking to, but the PVC sounds very interesting with the, the maintenance free planning, where you have to collect the PVC, or I'm sorry, the hardy plank is smart side every ten years or whatever they suggest. So that's as far as we've gotten with the architectural, that I do like where, where it's landing, and it's not quite done yet. But I think the colors are, in my mind, the, you know, the piece that may be moving a little bit. Then on the engineering side, you know, we're able to get the drainage to work. We actually, the building actually is, I'm sorry, this may have been done before I was here last time, where we sent the building down a farther, it may have already been the first time I came in. But adding the front patio, remove that front parking lot, and we moved the whole building up about twenty-five feet from the last plan, eliminated that, the parking area in the front. And now, the, the building now is about forty-five feet from the end of the sidewalk back. Currently, the building there now is about forty-three feet, so it's just a little bit further back than the current structure, or the current urban building. And the previous plan was about seventy feet back from the edge of the sidewalk with that parking area in the front. And we do have, we have enough parking with the underground and the surface for the unico. The landscape design is the next step I'm working on, but I have instructed them along the south parking spots, we would have arrovidas. There would have to be some type of door for smaller, up to four-foot diameter arrovida, because that's all the space we have between the parking spots and then the quick trip. And in the front, I'll probably have, you know, a fire pit and a table. And I've actually drawn a sign, I drew a sign in there now, and I don't know if that makes a difference, they have that in there now, I'm going through the process. I didn't know if I should just address that early on, but the area for a sign would be to the right as you enter.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Guess I'll get your sign permit, looks good though. Um, can you remind me what conversations we've had with the fire department about the turnaround? I know Glenn's been part of our staff meetings where you've shared this, but...
So we've gone through this, we did, the fire department changes that were made, we added a fire hydrant. I think that's moved, they did, they, they're asking to move that to the second, the one to the left, no.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So that's getting bumped over to the left. These drive slopes to the underground was adjusted into the eight percents, which was what the chief had asked for.
Did chief want that up here, the fire department connection? It seems like he wanted, it seems like he'd wanted up...
Uh, they wanted it in the front, he wanted it front by that other hydrant on Main Street. So by the entry door, so he said somewhere by the entry door near, by that hydrant there.
Okay.
And then we marked the Knox box on there, so the fire department connection, the Knox box, we adjusted the, the slope and added a hydrant, and that was what they were looking for.
Jeff, do you want to talk about the stormwater?
Uh, well, there were, the stormwater, it's already a very highly impervious area, so it's, it's a redevelopment project. But the stormwater will be treated on-site and then, we do not have any stormwater out in Main Street in this location. But we do own this property back here, which is the stormwater infiltration pond for the Maryhill development and everything. So their outfall, after it's been detained and treated, will just go into that pond. So it's actually kind of a nice little connection back here.
Have you thought about, where are you going to stack a fair amount of snow in the wintertime? There's not a lot of room here.
The sign takes my other spot too, I think the sign's going to have to be elevated a little bit. Yeah, there's only really two spots at the end of, depending on, you know, this year being lucky. But at the end of that turnaround and then the sign area.
Yeah, because it looks like there's some retaining and stuff in the back where there might be some room, I don't know if they can actually get the snow up there.
Back here or back here?
In the, the back, yeah, back up in there. It says, there's a note there about something retaining, I can't read it all on here, but...
Here, I'll zoom in here.
Retaining wall with fence, it says on there, so that concludes throwing snow over it.
You'll probably have to work with, I mean, you'll, you'll be working with a landscaper, obviously, that, you'll have some snow storage here. I know the guy that takes care of this and, you know, you could, might be able to push some of it over here, that's me, by the way.
Appreciate that.
But, because that's not going to harm anything, but you might have to haul snow away, I mean, that's kind of what...
In a bad year, we may.
Yeah, I was going to say, you, you have other apartment buildings, probably have to do that as well.
Yeah, not this year, of course.
Yeah, no, no, nobody's had to haul anything this year.
Yeah, I just always like to make people aware of it. Every once in a while, we get one of those winters and hauling snow is expensive, so...
And your dumpsters are in the basement, I remember.
In the basement, yeah.
Has there been any checking to see if there's any soil contamination in that area that, that's been petroleum and, and bodywork for years in that area? And there, there was a problem with at one point in time up...
I was at Burger King.
A little further north or south.
South Burger King.
Yeah, is that, is that something that the village guarantees?
We don't, yeah, it's not our property, we don't, we don't guarantee anything.
That's something to consider, I would think.
But we, we are working on the environmental, and that was one of the reasons why it may have taken me a little longer to get back in here. Uh, we did find a little bit, but it appears to be manageable at this point. And we're just going to the, well, the phase three, quantifying that, to see what it's going to cost and working with the sellers on that. So, at this point, and I just got the report this week, I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing. But the phase three will start with them talking to D N R, getting on-page with the same plan, making sure the D N R is on-page with their plan, and then the plan, I'm working through that with the current owners.
And if you do any geotechnical drilling, be careful if it's north of your property line.
Cemetery? Don't dig six, yeah, five feet, five.
Don't go more than three feet, you're okay.
Just from a process standpoint too, this isn't a planning commission item, but Adam will be back at our village board meeting on Monday, the seventh, coming up here for introducing his TIF request, so depending how that goes, you know, if it doesn't move forward, but not for TIF, the, the project couldn't happen, so we'll, we'll have to see how that conversation goes with the village board. But hopefully that's positive and we're able to, you know, have this project spark some redevelopment on North Main Street. But we'll see how that discussion goes and hopefully you'll be seeing Adam back here later this, you know, maybe spring for getting the site plan approvals and all of that.
You said forty-nine units, what's the bedroom mix on those, do you think?
Oh, let's see if I have that, if I don't have it, I have it pretty close. See if I, if I don't, I don't know that I can make this add up.
Is it one, twos, and threes or efficiencies?
Efficiencies to threes. I think there's ten efficiencies, twenty ones, five ones with the bedroom, which is something that I see a more interest in when people working from home. Uh, twelve twos and two threes. Somebody wants to check my math, I may have it, I may not.
You're all.
It probably is. It's a smart bet.
So, I'm, I'm looking at this, you're, you're pretty close to the property line, so I'm assuming that all the balconies are inset?
Correct.
So, that will help you on the parking lot side then too, so that you're, you're, you've got a little bit of a buffer space between your balconies and, and the public sidewalk that goes in front?
Yes.
Okay. The, uh, we had the village board get involved on the parking ordinance. You might wanna check that because you, according to their request in parking, you're really high on parking. I think you're gonna be way over on parking.
Yeah, I was a little worried. That got down to one and a half stalls per unit is what that was. The current plan, I'd be happy to take a few out if, if I get everything in the, in the basement to work. In the underground parking, the basement, I, in my head, plan on losing. Probably four units, probably four parking stalls, because they get too close to the wall where they don't work for a lot of vehicles. So, I plan on losing that. If it, if it lays out better than that, I'd be happy to get rid of a few of them. But I think we do need more than one and a half.
Fine, just make sure you present that as you move this project forward.
Yeah.
Uh, on the patio, I, I think that your project is headed in the right direction. I think that you've made some really nice improvements to the thing.
Thank you.
Uh, for the public, for not public, but for that patio area up front, I'd work with the landscape architect to come up with something that doesn't look so engineered. You know, something that, not personal.
Guys, I caught that crack, yeah.
I could've said so engineered it.
Engineered it, yes.
Uh, you know, so that you have some built-in soft seating or something that, that makes that space a comfortable place to be. Um, and, and I look at it from my, my perspective that this is one of the gateway buildings to our community. Uh, I'd, I'd like to have people look over at that and say, that's a really nice place and a nice thing to have, so spend a little time on that, and I think that you'll be rewarded.
Agreed.
And then the question I guess for Elise, Elise, because of the gas station to the south here, does there have to be a fence in there because of the change, the change between the two zones?
Um, I'd have to look at that with the landscape and buffering requirements, but, um, we'll have to do, I imagine this is gonna be a planned development too, given the, the setbacks. So, we may have to have some landscape flexibility and maybe kind of load up more of that in the front. But yeah, it's got, we have the gas, gas station and then the apartments. I think the, the parking lot for those apartments kind of backs up right to your parking lot too, so.
Yeah.
So, it's easier when the gas station's there first.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, but as we get into that, that's something I'll be checking and working on with him, just to see. MRA to, anytime you're, I mean, I guess this is actually maybe a less intense zoning than the commercial zoning that a gas station would have. So, if it was a gas station going in next to an existing apartment, they would have more landscape requirements than Adam would have, kind of going the opposite direction. But we'll, we'll be taking a look at that and see what you've got room for in there too. Maybe some arborvita or something that go along the sphere. The end of your parking space is there, but.
That's what you were talking about, is an arborvita buffer.
From the parking stalls, the south facing parking stalls, yeah, we'd like to do that. They do start in the parking lot, in the apartment parking lot behind it, and they do have some arborvitas in there that are slowly taken off.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
To second John's comments with respect to the patio, I would hope that there be some trees in that area to provide both shade and just for aesthetics. I, I like your project. I, I like the use of that property. I think it, it would be a great addition to the village. I still think you're potentially missing out on a golden opportunity to have commercial on that first floor corner. Scott brought it up in the last meeting, you know, historically, we've had a surplus of commercial, and we've gone the other route. And the only question I have is, is it possible to work with the architect or talk to the architect to potentially prepare that corner if it were ever converted to commercial? So that you're set up in advance and can reduce potential costs. But to me, that is an easy in, easy out, quick stop that could be, you know, some type of food service, coffee shop, something like that in the future. And I think at some point, fifteen years down the line, the village is gonna face a shortage of properties like that.
I will say from what I've heard from commercial, you know, restaurant folks that are looking to move into the village, drive-through is always their number one requirement, and so the circulation on this site, you know, that's definitely a challenge. Also, just to consider the parking requirement, maybe Adam's, you know, he's got that buffer, he's got more than what's required, but that commercial space, if it's a restaurant, if it's, you know, a dentist office, something like that, they would have their own land, uh, parking requirements that would be in addition to the apartments. But I, I mean, I think it'd be great. I just don't know if this is the right, if he's got some space to really have commercial be successful here. Maybe if the site was wider.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
I hear you.
All right, I think you have some additional feedback. I think that everybody is in agreement. They could make some nice changes and improvements, and keep moving forward.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, moving on. Item F is then postponed. And then item B, conceptual discussion with All-Star Properties, proposed revised duplex layout for lot three, four, and five, replaid. Is somebody here to talk to that?
Thanks. Elise, did you want me to start off or?
Take it away.
All right. So, you're aware that this area is currently in the process of being replanted for duplex lots? And, uh, well, so the reason to bring this concept in front of you is basically twofold, really, to just put the cards on the table. We had one lot that ended up being larger, which is this lot three. It's about half an acre. And then simultaneous to that, we had a, a buyer approach us and ask about a four unit. And we said, well, there's no other place in this redevelopment that we're doing that would accommodate that other than lot three. Everything is currently zoned duplex right now, so you couldn't do a four unit as such. But one possibility for this lot, both because it's larger and because it's kind of a buffer now between duplexes and a commercial to the south, would be to essentially put two duplexes on that instead of one. So, we're coming before you to say, okay, how, what is the plan commission's feeling in essentially putting four units on that lot instead of two? And that would, you know, preclude things like zero lot lining. Obviously, that becomes impossible in a situation like this. So, this would be a single, you know, a single owner, single, you know, rental. Although I suppose it could be condominiumized in the future or something like that.
No, you had a, your engineers had a call with our fire department, at least a couple back and forth. So, I think this was the revision we just received today that incorporated some of the comments about turnarounds and the width there. There'd be no parking signage along that private driveway there to make sure that folks could get in and out of the garages and.
Correct, so that the, so that Fire EMS could reach that back area. That had to stay twenty feet wide, that driveway has to stay twenty feet wide, and it can't have parking on it. I think those were the real, uh, those were the two
Yeah.
requirements from Fire EMS. Uh, otherwise, I think the only thi, although I'm not sure. Okay, it's not shown on this one, but utilities are already going, are already stubbed into that lot, and they would be split to go to the back, the back building. And that's it, really. I mean, we're, I'm just here to see if there's, if there's taste for that kind of slightly higher density on that particular lot. And that's what it really, all it boils down to.
Yeah, and then we, we make yet another revision to this GDP, but to make sure that, um, some of these backyard setbacks, here you could see there'd be a ten-foot rear yard setback. Lot two is a ten-foot rear, so those, those would be updated and called out. Um, and then the specific use, we'd have to call out for this flexibility to have two primary use structures on the same parcel would be group development, so we would have group development for lot three only as part of the GDP for this whole duplex development.
Yeah, I think the, the square footage size per unit would might be under a PD, we would have the flexibility to, to work with that too.
Yep.
Anybody else comment?
I, I have no objection to it. My initial reaction was, is there any wisdom to flipping the driveway to have it on the north side of the units? So that they're sighted better, but I, I don't know the answer to that. I think the more I've thought about it, it's probably more appropriate as it, as it is. But was that ever considered?
Um, I think the rationale here was, honestly, I think that would be fine, especially since we know what the use is to the south. I think the rationale here was just to, for there to be more buffer between the commercial and the duplexes than between duplex to duplex. But honestly, it's a little bit of a horse apiece, a little bit, in this case.
I think originally, didn't you show this one time way back with, with an alley loaded with four duplexes on it? Like when we first started talking about this replat?
That was at Center Island.
Yeah, that was to the, that was to the east.
I thought that was on this one too, because I know there was talk whether or not you were gonna save this lot for Beehive if they wanted to expand.
Oh, no, actually, I'm sorry, Scott, I think you might be right. I think there may have been a version about, of that somewhere in there, yeah. No, I think you're right about that.
We've been through so many versions.
Yeah, that's right.
Hard to remember.
Yeah, I, I remember, I too, I remember having a conversation that this lot was just so small and so narrow for commercial. I don't really know what you could've put on there in the first place. Is there any thought here to taking the unit on the west and turning it ninety degrees to minimize some of that dry? And then having that unit back to the detention pond? And then you have some potential green space in that northwest corner kind of thing? I don't know if the roots.
Um, you know, it's, it's, uh, it kind of all depends on how close we're putting the unit to, to the commercial. So, this kind of maximizes the distance between them and the commercial, but that's, that's certainly not inconceivable. I'm just, I, I'm kind of looking at this from, from a, you know, it's like, it's almost like a split four unit, um, which is the way it's laid out here, right? And it's not inconceivable that, that, you know, depending on whether someone wanted it to blend more with the duplexes or to look more like a standalone. Frankly, they could come back here and say, and again, really, the, that, that's why the central issue to me is, is their tolerance for a slightly higher density on this lot. Because really, then I, I think that gives someone the option to either say, yes, I want it to look like the rest of the duplexes more or less. Although all these duplexes will be somewhat distinct from each other, there's gonna be a variety here from sort of larger ranch-style ones like we have in the, in the subdivision that we, you know, finished a couple of years ago that are, that are built, to smaller, um, you know, more modestly sized duplexes. And, uh, but someone could also come back and just say, you know what, I wanna spend the extra six months or whatever it takes to try to turn this into, actually change the underlying zoning and just have it be an outright four unit, right? In which case, I think the layout would end up being very similar to this, just without space between the buildings. But at this point, all we're looking for is the flexibility to put two duplexes on here. If someone else wants to squish them together, then they can come back and do that work without further delaying this whole process, right?
It would be a comp plan amendment, because this is just showing two families. The other thing I'm thinking about is, I know a lot of these corner lot units we talked about, you know, having kind of the split driveway requirement. So, if these duplexes are rather, you know, not facing Bergamot anymore, but the side is facing Bergamot, I don't know if there's any language we wanna have about aesthetics or like a sidewalk connection to that, you know, just to make it look like you're not driving by the side of the house on Bergamot, but that it kind of looks like the front, or there's maybe a little porch or something that's off that side of that unit. But I guess it's kind of up to the planning commission. If you're not too concerned about driving past the side of a duplex as you're coming down Bergamot and going past Beehive and all of that, then.
For lots of PD, we're gonna have an SIP and a look at what somebody's proposing to put on there, so at that time, we can do that.
Yep, yep, these will all have SIPs required, so I'm really hoping that one builder, a couple builders buy a couple lots, so we can kind of save some time here, but we'll see how it all shakes out.
To answer the question about the density, I think it's, you know, very appropriate and kind of steps down from the commercial use and.
It's not really different to the lots to the north. They're basically the same size.
Anybody else? No, I, I agree with what you said. I think it's inappropriate to use the site, so I guess you move it a you, and you move it forward.
All right, thanks very much, everybody. Good night.
Actually, I'm sorry, I have one more question. Is there any reason that I should stick around for the right-of-way?
Uh, no, this is the formal, I mean, we'll be there in two minutes, but, um, yeah, this is, planning commission needs to give it their thumbs up, and it'll be on the board on Monday night. But just part of the process for these right-of-way vacations, it's, it's really tedious, so.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Moving on, item five A, invitation from Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, or commonly called CARP C, for planning commission or elected official to serve on their ad hoc committee on proactive planning to implement the regional development framework. There is some information on that being in your packet. At least you wanna add anything to that or?
Um, just that, I think, I'm not sure when that was, last fall, maybe Steve Steinhaus from CARP C came and presented about their regional development framework. This is an invitation to all of, was sent to all the planning directors in the CARP C region. Uh, we'll be sharing this with the village board as well, but if anybody is interested in, you know, not necessarily officially representing Oregon, but serving on this larger county slash regional effort to talk about how this gets implemented and from a policymaker perspective, how you see things moving forward. This is an opportunity for you to get involved, but you don't need to officially go through the village. If this is something personally you're interested in, you can follow the, um, the links or I can forward you this email. That's easier. Let me know if you're interested, and I'll forward you the email, and then you can submit your application. But just included that email, and then there's their resolution to create the committee, and a little bit more information about the goals of the committee there for you to read.
I know when they came in before that, there was a survey that had been sent out from each of the municipalities or zip codes or whatever. And we were assured at that time that our, the desires of the individual communities would be maintained. And as I went to their website and looked, it seems like a lot of the individual concerns of each community have been whitewashed across the entire thing. And I'm not seeing the individual concerns of Oregon being sort of, hopefully so. And that gives me pause that, that what we're seeing is just sort of like a feel-good measure, and they're doing what they wanna do anyways. I don't know if there's anything to do other than say something here, but, um, frustrating.
I have some thoughts on kind of the, the role of regional planning. I think it has a lot, there's a lot of good intent behind it, but when it comes to implementation, I think it gets really messy and it's hard, you know, it's, it's great for, you know, our planning staff and other folks to kind of get together and talk about common issues. But then, when it comes to actually implementing changes, every community is so different in, in our needs and our goals, that, yeah, we might agree on large-scale things, sustainability and job creation and all of that. But when it comes to boots on the ground, you know, we're really familiar. really familiar with Oregon, and we're going to do, I think, what's best for Oregon, so I agree, I'm just, you know, we can all have our personal opinions and passing this forward. If you want to be involved, I think it's great if there are people, you know, if you want to be there and voice that opinion as many times, but others might feel that that is not maybe a good use of their time, so just...
I had the same feeling about it. It almost looked like trying to reverse things and go back to Dane County Regional Planning Commission that was, spent a lot of time and money and made a lot of people unhappy.
So just letting you know, this is where they are.
All right.
For better or worse.
Don't kill the messenger.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll keep moving then, I guess. Item seven, all right, I'm sorry, item six, we have unfinished business. Item seven, new business. In your packet is a review and possible recommendation for the vote, to the vote board for resolution number twenty-two dash oh-one, to discontinue a portion of Oregon Park Avenue. Applicant is Woodbury Parks LLC, also known as Oregon Parks LLC slash All-Star Properties. Want to give some background?
So this is a portion, this is not, would not change with that lot three change we were just reviewing with the two duplexes here, but there's currently a bump out of some on-street parking here that are kind of a bump in from the road that would not be needed. So this would be in front of lots one and two, on those duplexes that we were just taking a look at. So the right-of-way vacation process is pretty lengthy, but we introduced this to the board, I think, back in January. It has to be noticed a couple different times in the newspaper. The planning commission, you all just kind of need to give it your nod, and this will go to the village board on Monday for final approval. So this is something Jeff and our village near, take a look at. This is not useful, you know, valuable right of way. I think we're...
Not needed.
Not needed, and we'll still have our, our standards with, or even a little bit wider here for the fire trucks and maintenance and all of that.
They'll be moving, the public sidewalk will get moved out, and curb will get replaced.
Yeah, so rather than the sidewalk kind of jogging in for that parking, it'll just be straight across.
Seems pretty straightforward.
It is.
Seems like the right thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
Entertaining a motion, then?
So moved.
So moved by Larry, second?
Second.
I'm sorry?
Second.
Second by Larry. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
All right.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on, item number eight, staff reports status of development project. Jeff, where are we at?
Where are we at with what? Well, you know, a couple of big things that are, you know, going to, we really don't have any, as you know, new developments that are coming other than, you know, Bergamot five D is wanting to push ahead and start construction this year. We kind of anticipate that we're going to be seeing Autumn Ridge, phase two, or is that, yeah, two B come in, because there's been just some great result to that. And Highlands and Netherwood, you're just going to start seeing signs from Lennar, if you remember. So Lennar is a very, Lennar is just a nationwide biggest home building company in the world, right, or in the United States?
In the nation.
Huh?
In the country.
In the country, and they will be, they've purchased all of phase three and the remaining lots of phase two and one of Highlands and Netherwood. They will be pulling, we figure about an average of ten permits at a time, and building all ten of those homes kind of in a sequential basis, but very close to each other. So we're going to see a lot of that happening.
Where are they at?
Huh?
Where are they at?
Home office is in Miami, but they work nationwide.
Yeah, I was going to say, we were up in a subdivision up in Minneapolis, visiting some, my daughters-in-laws, and all the signs around were Lennar, and boy, the homes are just going up. They're very nice homes, I mean, very beautiful homes, and they have different options and layouts and that type of thing, but it's a very structured type of system. And so, we're seeing a lot of activity. We anticipate a good year of a lot of homes, but not any brand-new subdivisions coming in right now. It's about, and then other than that, we just got our roadway projects, roadway maintenance this year, and we're just building a lot of other stuff, but no major road projects this year, just maintenance.
You got to move.
Well, we got to first do our little fix over there, and then we got to move. Move us out of here, all of us.
Okay, so next meeting is April seventh, and then move it, just as an FYI, planning staff meeting agenda is in your packet if anybody has questions. Seeing none, we'll keep moving. Future meetings, we'll talk about driveway setbacks and the annexation process. Until that time, we're going to be looking up for an adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Moleskine, second by?
Second.
Larry, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned.